Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond. We will move to closed session and then back in here.
Sarah came in by phone that day, too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Orange County Board of Education for Monday, February the 10th to order. I need a motion to enter closed session for reasons so stated on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will move to closed session. Hey, thank you, Mr. Richmond.
I know, I just don't want to.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting February the 10th, meeting of the Orange County Board of Education to order. And we will start with the public charge that I will read. The Orange County Board of Education pledges to its citizens to conduct its business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy toward both school personnel and each other. A moment of silence will be observed before each meeting. In addition to the moment of silence, the board will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The board asks that you check your cell phones and other electronic devices to be certain they are either turned off or on vibrate to avoid interruption of this meeting. And I will do that now. So now I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I would just like to welcome everyone here tonight and everyone that's watching at home. We welcome you here. We do have Mr. Richmond, who is not feeling well tonight, and he is on Zoom at home. And so we will be watching him on Zoom as we proceed. We will start with recognitions tonight, and it is National School Counseling Week this week, and Dr. Drayer is going to tell us everything about that. And maybe we have some counselors here?
Evening, everyone. Welcome to National School Counseling Week 2025. This week, from February 3rd through February 7th, we join schools across the nation in celebrating the vital role that school counselors play in our students' lives. Under this year's theme, "School Counseling: Helping Students Thrive," we recognize how our dedicated counselors support academic achievement, social-emotional development, and college and career readiness for all students. Our school counselors work tirelessly to create safe, supportive environments that foster growth, resilience, and success for each student in our care. From helping students navigate academic challenges to providing crucial emotional support and career guidance, their impact extends far beyond the walls of their offices. It is my pleasure to introduce our district lead school counseling coordinator, Ms. Charity Moore, who will share more about our counseling initiatives and the incredible work happening across our schools.
Good evening. School counselors play a crucial role in the academic and personal development of students. They serve as vital support systems, not only helping students navigate their educational journey, but also addressing emotional, social, and mental health challenges. A professional school counselor's guidance can help students manage stress, build resilience, and develop the skills necessary to succeed in school and life. Beyond academics, school counselors are there to identify and intervene in situations of stress management, family problems, and personal struggles. They provide a safe, confidential space for students to express themselves and receive the help they need. Their work also extends to guiding students through career exploration, helping them make informed decisions about their future. Ultimately, school counselors contribute to creating a positive and supportive learning environment, ensuring that students feel valued, heard, and empowered to achieve their fullest potential. Their work goes far beyond just academic support. It is foundational to a student's overall well-being and success. National School Counseling Week is not only to recognize professional school counselors, but also for school counselors to bring awareness to our profession. I am here to speak on behalf of the nine school counselors in elementary school, six in middle school, and nine in high school. We appreciate being recognized this evening. Thank you for your time and your continued support of the OCS professional school counselors and the great school counseling profession.
You all for the work that you do every day to help our students. You are much appreciated. Okay, up next, we have the Orange High School Men's Cross Country, 3A Team State Champions. That's a mouthful. And we have their coach.
Coaches, coaches.
Coaches, coaches.
Hey, guys. Thanks so much for taking the time to honor this great group of people. This is Coach Casey Collins, and on behalf of Omar Med and Aaron Carr, who are unable to be here tonight, again, thank you for taking the time to make this happen, and happy Counselors Week. So, and I hope this is okay. This can take just a second, but just the stars aligned in that the team had been given a chance. Okay, you guys won the state championship. What do you want to do? Do you guys go out and get rings or whatever? And instead, they decided they wanted a plaque and they wanted a jacket, which they just designed. And this just finished two hours ago. I got notified. So I figured we had to take advantage of this. So here, this is the unveiling. They've yet to see this. So here we go. So that's the big moment right there. And I do, I did just want to take a second just to kind of brag on these guys for a second. You know, the state championship is nice, but you know, really, this is kind of a culmination of four years of excellence, especially coming from the seniors. Four conference championships, three regional championships, one regional runner-up, third place finish for the seniors their freshman year, third place finish in the state, second place finish last year, and then culminating with the state championship here this year. You know, along the way, it really has been fun. Normally, the whole like men's team kind of bugs me because I don't, I'm not in the business of calling a 14-year-old a man, but in this, in this case, I do think it's actually pretty fitting. It's really been, you know, one of the absolute pleasures of my, of my career, watching, you know, watching kids grow, including, including this group, and seeing their confidence, their true, you know, confidence grow, their ability to advocate for one another has been, has been really fun. And I think that in a way, at this, at the meet here, the state championship kind of things came together with the fact that these guys were ranked fifth coming into the state championship. So they weren't, it was, it was like pretty hectic at the state championship in that they were like trying to find us and say, okay, wait, who are you guys? We did not have you, you were not on our radar at all, anything like that. And not only did they win, they won by the largest margin of any 3A men's team since 2018. So, you know, it was, it was a pretty incredible day, and we had, you know, a lot of people stepping up and stuff. So again, just, you know, congratulations to these guys. Lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of miles, as you can imagine, are being put in for this to happen. So yeah, congratulations again, and thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Nice jacket.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Very impressive. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Y'all did a great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
They looked great, right?
That was a very impressive story. And I'm glad that you got your coats tonight because I think you need it when you go out of here tonight. So I'm glad you got them. Thank you. Okay, we have National SRO Appreciation Day, which is February the 15th this week. And Mr. Poole is going to talk about that.
Yes, thank you for having me. Hope everyone's well. So yes, February 15th, every year since '22, National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. So I want to talk about our SROs for a little bit. On a day-to-day basis, these SROs, they continue to build relationships with these students. They create positive cultures within their schools. And they keep us safe. That's what they do. To some, they are friends. To others, they are mentors and educators. But to all, they are protectors. So I'd encourage our students, our faculty and staff, and our parents. Next time that you see an SRO, give them a kind word. Tell them thank you. It may seem small, but really, it is a big gesture. A lot of the stuff seems to go unnoticed at times, but maybe it doesn't. I don't know. But just know that they are really important. They are making a difference within our schools. But lastly, I do want, I'm going to keep this short. I do want to say thank you to our Board for allowing this collaboration with the Sheriff's Office to continue. We couldn't do it without you. So thank you. And for us to have SROs in every single school, we truly are blessed. When you look nationally, obviously, some schools aren't as blessed as us to have a SRO on a daily basis. So thank you.
Big thank you to all of our SROs who work every day to form relationships and work with kids and teachers in the building. And it is greatly appreciated. And thank you, Mr. Poole, for helping with that. All right, we need to adopt our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Richmond?
Aye.
Okay, my agenda is approved. We do not have any public comments tonight, so we're going to skip that. So we do have board comments. So we will start with Ms. Padilla tonight. Is that okay with you?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Purcell. Thank you, everyone, for being here. And last month has been really busy. I have run around to different events. And I'm glad that we're celebrating Black History Month. And I attended several events. But instead of telling you all the events that I have attended, I'd like to share something with you. Immigrant's economic contribution in North Carolina. 8.3% of the population in North Carolina are immigrants. 871,765 immigrants live in the state of North Carolina. 34.7% are undocumented. Taxes: Immigrants, regardless of their status, contribute hundreds of billions of dollars in federal, state, and local taxes. Their economic contribution far exceeds the cost of public services they receive. Going to read that part one more time. Taxes: Immigrants, regardless of their status, contribute hundreds of billions of dollars in federal, state, and local taxes. Their economic contribution far exceeds the cost of public services they receive. 8.4 billion taxes paid by immigrants each year in North Carolina. Of that amount, 2.8 billion are state and local taxes. 772.5 million taxes paid by undocumented immigrants. 310.9 million are state and local taxes. Spending power: 25 billion is the spending power of immigrants in North Carolina. 6.4 billion is the spending power of undocumented immigrants. Housing: 217,000 homeowners in North Carolina are immigrants. 7.3 billion is the housing wealth held by immigrant households. 1.8 billion is the amount paid by immigrant-led households in rent each year. Business: 67,453 immigrants are entrepreneurs in North Carolina. 21,553 of those entrepreneurs are undocumented. 1.5 billion in profits are generated each year by businesses owned by immigrants. Workforce: 10.9% of the workforce in North Carolina are immigrants. 3.7% of the workers in the state are undocumented. 29% of construction workers are immigrants. 23.3% work in agriculture sector. 18.3% work in the accommodation and food services industry. 17.2% work in manufacturing. All the information I just read needs to be really digested. I just want to make the public aware of the amazing immigrant... I'm just very... Okay, let me go back. I just want to make the public aware of the amazing immigrant economic contribution in North Carolina. Today, I want to talk about something we all experience: uncertainty. Life can sometimes feel like a storm that we cannot control, whether there are personal challenges, school, or the future. Uncertainty is something we all face. And when we find ourselves in those tough moments, it is important to remember that we do not have to go through it alone. These uncertain times are not for us to turn against each other. It is to turn towards each other and work together. Support is powerful, whether it's from a friend, a family member, community, or even a stranger. Having someone there to listen, encourage, or just share a moment of kindness can make a world of difference. So let's not forget how crucial it is to be there for each other. A small gesture, a kind word, can lift someone in ways you may never fully understand. Mental health, it's an area that often goes unnoticed, but it is just as important as our physical health. It is okay not to be okay sometimes. The more we open up, the easier it becomes to heal and grow. And to end, let's support our immigrant community during these stressful times. Bullying has no place in our lives. Orange County schools will not tolerate any kind of bullying towards anyone. We have policies in place that address these issues. Words can hurt, but kindness has the power to heal. Let's commit to being a community that builds up, not tearing down. Together, we can face uncertainty, support each other, take care of our mental health, and create a safe environment for everyone in our schools and beyond. We are all Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Padilla. Ms. Molly?
So this is the first set of board comments since January 20th. And I have spent the past few weeks feeling both bereft and enraged. My college major many years ago was called "Public Policy and American Institutions". And as deeply imperfect as our American institutions have always been, I've always felt a little sentimental about their potential for good, for the arc bending towards justice. It's been difficult to watch as our American institutions and our entire system of American government have come under the most dangerous assault they have faced since the nation was founded. It feels like we're living in a history book. I was just listening to some Hamilton with my daughter this weekend in the car, and history has its eyes on us. The actions coming out of the federal government have also created destabilization across so many aspects of real people's lives. There are Orange County schools' families whose jobs in the federal government or in scientific research or at a university may be about to disappear. And they're worried about how they're going to provide for their children. As our resolution speaks to tonight, there are Orange County schools' students who are afraid to come to school or afraid their beloved family members may get taken while they're at school. There are kids experiencing bullying because of their race, or gender, or national origin. There are staff members who are worried about how on earth we'll give kids what they need if federal funds for things like free lunch and exceptional children's programs and CTE programs and low-income schools get cut. That's a lot of additional anxiety to hold while also trying to teach, or learn, or be a supportive adult in a kid's life. It's not fair. And as always, in many cases, the biggest threats are to the members of our community who have historically always had to be the most resilient in the face of discrimination and oppression. Our students and families deserve better. And while we can't control everything that happens in Washington, I believe we can do a lot to create a community of care and support and thriving in each of our schools. Our students need us to create as stable and supportive a learning environment as we can. Heck, our teachers need that too, so they can each be their best. Each school is a whole little world with so much potential. And I am committed to doing whatever I can to support each of our schools as they support our students. And I'm staying focused on the district's mission, which is to educate students in a safe, inclusive environment where we engage, challenge, and inspire them to reach their maximum potential. Let's let that be our focus as we move forward: what we can build together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Molly. Ms. Dole?
Thank you, Chair Purcell. Thank you, Wendy and Sarah, for your comments and your work on our resolution tonight. I had two things I wanted to share. The first one is I wanted to recognize our former board member and Chair Brenda Stevens, who, at the end of Governor Cooper's term, was bestowed membership in the Order of the Longleaf Pine, which is quite an honor, exemplifying extraordinary service to the state. You may know that Brenda Stevens is an Army veteran. And she took efforts towards true integration and access to government services by operating the Orange County Bookmobile starting in 1976. She became the Orange County Library Director. And she was the first black woman or man to reach Regional Director over the Haiku Nichi library system. She also gave us 20 years of service on the Orange County Schools Board of Education. So one of our longest-serving board members. I'm personally grateful for her mentorship and friendship. To me, as I joined the Board, she served as chair more than once. She also served on our North Carolina School Board Association and was president of the NCSBA during COVID. She's also served historic Hillsborough Alliance, Burrell School Commissioner, longtime member of AKA Sorority, and has been an active member and officer at times of our local NAACP. And at a personal note, if you know Brenda, she is passionate about kids. She's passionate about literature. I would have loved for her to teach my kids. And I've learned a lot from her. And she continues to serve kids in Orange County schools. So I'm very thankful for Brenda. I wanted to give her that recognition. On another note, I wanted to share that, as an educator, I had the opportunity to pursue mental health first aid training. And in light of some of the concerns that have been elevated... This is a program that, you know, it's like knowing how to respond to medical emergencies, but it's mental health emergencies. And it's several hours of training. And the school where I teach in Durham is piloting a partnership with UNC in this area because we are doing teen mental health first aid training. So I'm really excited about this. All of our freshmen are getting trained in how to be supportive peers. And they're getting certificates of completion, just like those educators, like myself, who participated, have mentally, mental health first aid recognition. And this is a challenging time for our students and teachers and staff. Students are struggling with bullying. Students are struggling with fear and anxiety. And I want to echo that we all need to do all that we can to be supportive of our school communities.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Ms. Hausner?
Sure. Boy, thank you all for those comments. I wanted to talk a little bit about the same thing. First, maybe first, we're going to talk about a resolution shortly. And I wanted to thank Sarah and Wendy for putting that together. So thank you for that. I landed in a different place, maybe because I felt I had to because we're all on edge these days. But I needed to, I connected with how grateful I feel to serve in a diverse, inclusive community and a school district that embraces our hard-working, tax-paying, and wonderful immigrant families. And it makes me cringe to hear... Well, I won't go there. I also am grateful for the work that our community, our district, the county, the Sheriff's Department has done to make our immigrant and all our communities more resilient and safer. That is helping us today. It's a good time to shout out to the incredible work that our family liaisons... I see Sandra Blevko here. Our family liaisons are doing in partnership with the county's Family Success Alliance, El Centro, and others. And I'm also grateful to the sheriff, to Sheriff Blackwood and his team for years, not, over a decade, of relationship-building and education to keep our community, including our immigrant community, safe. These are really important building blocks that are paying off now. It's a shared investment that we have made in this community. And I see it. And when I speak to our immigrant families, they feel safe in this context. And it almost feels like there's something over us that's protecting us. And the resolution we're going to talk tonight, it feels like it'd add to that perspective. So I'm grateful for that. And I just had to say a shout-out also to our wonderful counselors tonight. Thank you for what you do. And a shout-out to Dr. Pack and her team for some amazing work with the principals and high school counselors who are helping our students prepare for high school. And there was a great turnout last month at Stand Back. And I'm even happier to see the continuation, the follow-up on those events. So thank you. You know, to me, with all the craziness going on in the world, it is really an honor to be part of Orange County schools. Thank you.
Mr. Atticam?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank all of our administration, our staff, our liaisons, our schools, for ensuring we have a welcoming environment, all the way from the safety and security of our students to our families, and even our staff. I think it's very important for everybody to know that you can reach out to someone in our community, including all of the board members. I've attended many community meetings over the past several months about all the concerns that are going on. And it's very reassuring to see all of our community coming together and seeing what we can do to help each other and what resources are available and knowing what the concerns are. And it's very concerning to me when a student is scared to go to school. It should be the safest place they feel and know they belong and have something to look forward to. I also just wanted to just congratulate the Orange County Cross Country State Champions. Thank you to their SROs, our own Andre Richmond as well. Thank you for all you've done and all your many years of supporting the SROs and our Sheriff's Department as well. Thank you all, our counselors. Also want to thank the Transportation Department again because it is the month of loving the bus and all they do to make sure our students get to... the bus and all they do to make sure our students get to school every day safely. Attended many events, as most of the board did, whether it was going to Eflin Cheeks to hear the third-grade concert, Mr. Johnson receiving the Regional Principal of the Year, to all the MLK events that have been happening in our community for so many years. I also attended and was invited to the Orange High School First Pitch, where our prior coach, Dees, spoke at that event. And I just wanted to say thank you to Bryce Wilson, who still continues to contribute back to the school for fundraising and just motivation of all of these students who are dreaming and deserve to dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richmond?
Yes, ma'am. Real quick, I want to thank all of our counselors for all the work that they do at our schools. Congratulations to the OHS Men's Cross Country 3A State Champions. Thank you to all our school resource officers for being mentors, number one, and being a resource for families. That is the number-one priority, as being a school resource officer, not being an officer, as being a resource for families, and most of all, being a mentor. And then finally, for Black History Month, every year, the Black Indigenous People of Color elected officials of Orange County, we always do something each year during Black History Month. So this year, we had the opportunity to recognize someone in Orange County that made a huge contribution, a Black person that's made a huge contribution to the county. And I had the opportunity to recognize my great aunt, and her name was Maggie Lattalie. That was my grandmother's sister, and she went to North Carolina Central. She grew up here in Orange County, but wanted to go to Central, so she was able to talk her parents into allowing her to go to Hillside High School. We had a family member that lived in Durham, so she moved to Durham with that family member, went to Hillside, graduated, and went on to Central to become a social worker. And while there, she played basketball and was part of the YWCA. And then she graduated, went on to graduate from Atlanta University, getting her master's in social work. And so, and I think 1983, she was, she was recognized and made a part of the North Carolina Central Athletic Hall of Fame. And the most important piece, or contribution that she made, or something that really holds value to my heart, is she joined the Women's Army Corps in 1942. And if you've had the opportunity to see the movie on Netflix, Six Triple Eight, that was directed by Tyler Perry, she was a part of that iconic all-Black female battalion. And she was one of 25 women from North Carolina to be a part of that. And they, they came across a lot of obstacles during that time, but that was a huge accomplishment for her. And it was something that I never knew about until I watched the movie and got a chance to see her name as one of the, one of the women that was a part of that. So we all was able to do a video for that, so if you get an opportunity to take a look at it, there's more information about what all she did. But that was, that was a huge accomplishment in our family.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richmond, for that piece of history that some of us didn't know. So thank you very much. I would just like to add to what everyone has said tonight. I, too, have attended several events in Orange County over the last month, and heard comments from lots of people, lots of concerns, lots of what-ifs, lots of unknowns. And I think this board has come together to try to help calm some of those fears that people may have. I think that this board has one thing in mind, and that is the students that we have in our buildings every day, keeping them safe, keeping them happy, and keeping them learning. That is our goal. And the rest of the world is out there, but we're going to concentrate on our kids and our teachers, and helping them be supportive to those children. And it's really, as someone else said a few minutes ago, the community has come together, and you hear it loud and clear in some of these meetings that you go to, expressing their concerns, expressing their fears and their doubts. But all at the same time, what can we do? What are you doing? Because they do want to know what we are doing. And we have tried to put out to people what we are doing, and we have been on top of this since day one, or before, really. And we are trying to do our best to help our kids and our families in this district. But I appreciate the help and the thoughtfulness and the conversation that is going on within the community to make sure that everyone is safe and happy, and learning is still taking place in our buildings every single day. I hope that continues. I have no reason to doubt that it won't. But we are doing everything we can. We are working with the superintendent, who is doing everything she can to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and that we are here as a resource for our families and for our children that we see every day in our buildings. So I thank everyone for their comments tonight. I thank everyone, because as I have also gone to all these meetings, I have also been in schools, and school is going on. School is carrying on, whether it is during the day, or whether it is at night with a concert, or a program, or recognitions of somebody, it's all going, school is going on. And that is, that is important, and it will continue to be that way. And so I thank our superintendent for her work, I thank her staff for their work, because they are very dedicated to this, and we are all on the same page on this. And so I just want to reiterate that to everybody tonight, and then thank this board for your comments that you said tonight. And I will turn it over to Dr. Jones, as it's her turn.
Good evening, Chair Purcell, Vice Chair Richmond, members of the board, students, staff, and community members. On February 1st, I celebrate my one-year anniversary as your superintendent. From day one, I communicated the need for us, all of us, to stay in a cycle of continuous improvement. This past year has been dedicated to ensuring our leaders understand the why and how around four pillars that drive my work as superintendent. First, to communicate and maintain high expectations for all staff and all students. Second, hold everyone accountable for meeting those expectations. Third, provide staff and students ongoing support. And finally, to celebrate our successes along the way. While the last year has been filled with its own unique challenges, I am pleased with what we have accomplished in such a short amount of time. Orange County Schools is focused on ensuring that all of our students receive high-quality instruction and access to resources. We are committed to supporting individual schools and staff to improve instructional practices. We have and will continue to offer professional development to teachers, staff, and school leaders that have a direct impact on student learning. We understand how important it is to create and maintain a work and learning environment where every staff member and every student feels valued, respected, and supported. Schools utilize their school improvement team to address school-level concerns. At the district level, we respond to teacher and student survey data. We meet monthly with our Teacher of the Year Roundtable. My team and I quickly and appropriately address concerns that are brought to our attention. Our Equity Task Force meets regularly, and members of our Equity and Curriculum Instruction Team collaborate often and are physically present in schools to ensure we are adequately supporting students and staff. We are working to build stronger connections with our families, because we understand that when our families are engaged, our students succeed. I am sure many of you received the calls, see the social media posts regarding events that Orange County Schools has hosted. We have and plan to continue to engage and educate our families regarding their rights as parents, how to best support their child, and the number of programs and opportunities that we offer to our students, many of which you won't find in any other district. As we look ahead, I am excited to continue this important work and build on the foundation that we have established. Thank you to our board, to the staff, to our community, to our students, for your ongoing support as we work together to fulfill the mission of Orange County Schools, which is, I think Ms. Smiley mentioned it, and that is really the core at what we do each and every day, and that mission is to educate students in a safe, inclusive environment where we engage, challenge, and inspire them to reach their maximum potential. Thank you, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jones. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, it is approved. Okay. We have a resolution tonight that we're going to read. Two weeks ago, you may remember that I read a statement concerning changes to immigration laws and policies. And tonight, we bring forth a resolution that supports that, our families, our students, but goes a little deeper than what I read a couple of weeks ago. And so tonight, we are going to read it out loud for everyone. I would like to thank Ms. Padilla and Ms. Smiley for their work on this, because they really got the ball rolling on this. And Mr. Ramey has also helped considerably to make sure that we are saying everything the way that we should say it. So tonight, if you will bear with us for a few minutes, we're going to read this resolution so that everyone can hear it. Then we will sign it a little later on, and Mr. McCune will take care of the rest of it. So we're going to start with Ms. Hausser tonight, and then we're each going to have some parts to read.
Sure, thank you. This is our, the board's resolution on support for immigrant students and families, and it starts, "Whereas the board recognizes local concerns raised by potential changes in how federal immigration laws and policies," excuse me, "are enforced, and the impact this may have on public schools and students, and thereby intends to address these concerns." And?
Whereas the U.S. Supreme Court, Empyla versus Doe, 1982, ruled that no public school district can deny children access to a free public education based on their immigration status or the immigration status of their parents, recognizing the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and citing the harm it would inflict on child and the society itself to deny them access to public education. And?
Whereas every child in the state of North Carolina is furthermore insured a free public K-12 education through rights enshrined in the North Carolina State Constitution in Articles One and Nine. And?
Whereas Orange County Schools is a compassionate and caring school district that is committed to creating a welcoming atmosphere that celebrates all families' cultures and values equality and social justice. And?
Whereas ensuring that our schools are safe and inviting for all students and their families helps secure the physical safety and emotional well-being of all students in the district, and is essential in order for students to achieve and grow. And?
Whereas any potential increase in federal immigration law enforcement activities in and around schools or transportation routes will disrupt the learning environment to which all students are entitled, and would significantly interfere with the ability of all students to access a free public K-12 education, such that students who are themselves undocumented and students who are documented may, but whose schoolmates, friends, or family members might not be, are all affected and at risk. And?
Whereas the research shows that across infancy, childhood, and adolescence, child-family separations, including immigrant-related separations, can be related to negative outcomes across the lifespan, and the scientific evidence is conclusive that parent-child separation leads to a host of long-term psychological, social, and health problems that are not necessarily resolved upon reunification. And?
Whereas threats of separation and deportation of students and their families can create severe and lasting emotion, emotional, psychological, and physical barriers to learning, including mental health issues and trauma such as anxiety, depression, and post-traumatic stress disorder, and that these should be addressed and allayed or reduced through support systems. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Orange County School Board of Education hereby...
welcomes and supports all Orange County School students and values the involvement and full participation of all Orange County School students, staff, and families in their school communities without regard to immigration status.
affirms that all children have the right to attend school in the county in which they reside without regard to their immigration status in accordance with Board Policy 4125. affirms that Orange County Schools shall honor its commitment under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, and will disclose information contained in student records only as required by law, or when the school system determines that such disclosures are necessary under specific FERPA provisions, for example, to prevent imminent harm to others in a health and safety emergency.
recognizes a responsibility to minimize disruptions to the learning environment, and therefore reserves the right to deny entry to school system property unless there's a legal right of entry or exigent circumstances indicating a threat to public safety. To ensure that any such requests by immigration officials are handled appropriately and lawfully, such requests should be directed to the principal, who will follow district procedures, including validating the individual's authorization, consulting with the superintendent or designee, who may consult with legal counsel to ensure compliance with applicable laws, and taking reasonable steps to notify a parent or legal guardian if their request involves a student.
encourages the superintendent to continue to collaborate with community-based organizations who provide support and resources for undocumented mixed-status students and families, to better understand and address whole-child concerns, which may be inhibited students' ability to thrive in school and to connect families to resources, and update the board on these collaborative efforts. Request the superintendent continue to monitor relevant data such students' attendance, dropout rates, students' well-being metrics, and engagement in family outreach activities, and provide regular updates to the board so that the board can understand the impact of this climate on students and support the district's response.
And that concludes the resolution. And I again thank Ms. Padilla and Ms. Smiley for their work on this, and everyone else who had a part in it. And we will sign that all tonight, and it will be a resolution in Orange County Schools.
As a reminder, you do have to take action on it.
That's right, we do have to vote on it. I did forget about that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Richmond?
Aye.
Okay, it is passed. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. McCune, because I had not written that down. Okay, we now move into our work session with our summer programming updates with Ms. Amber
Good evening, everybody. It is a pleasure to be here with you in February to talk about summer programming. So I think that that in itself is an achievement for us, because this is earlier and earlier every year that we get to talk about this stuff. So I'm happy to be here to share a little bit about what we're planning for this summer and answer any questions that you may have. So tonight, we wanted to start by taking a minute to recognize that this summer, there will be less funding available due to the sunsetting of ESRA dollars that have been here in the district the past few years. So we decided to delineate for you... So we decided to delineate for you some of the programming that is required that we offer versus those that we are going to continue to prioritize that are actually optional for us here but are important for Orange County Schools. So as you can see, Read to Achieve is one of the required programs that we will offer. We will offer it to the year-round students of Hillsborough Elementary School in June, and then we will offer a traditional version in July. We will only serve second and third grade students at that camp this year, but I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. High schools will also offer credit recovery, and our exceptional children services will be provided, and families will know about their eligibility for that based on the IEP process and student IEP goals. Some of the optional programming that you will see this summer, our middle school and high school transition activities will happen, so Middle School 101, freshman orientation. We will have Summer Careers Academy through our CTE program, along with internships and CTE engineering camp. We will also be expanding a little bit some of the ML High School Bridge programming that was offered beginning last year, and then we will also have the YMCA providing Camp Crush, along with some after-school programming options. So let's talk for a second about Read to Achieve. That's a big one for us in the summer. So this year, we will only serve second and third grade students. I've provided the dates here for you all, as well as community members. So Hillsborough's camp will be June 16th through July 3rd, with a holiday for Juneteenth on June 19th. The camp will take place at Hillsborough Elementary School, and we did not have the overlap this year with traditional school workdays and Hillsborough camp starting, so that should eliminate some issues that we've had in the past with staffing and keeping everybody's days and hours and all of that sorted out. Traditional Read to Achieve camp will take place beginning on July 14th through August 1st. You will notice that there are 15 days for the traditional camp and only 13 for Hillsborough. We've had that same situation based on the calendar for the past few years, but what I can assure you is that we will have more than 72 hours, which is the minimum requirement of direct literacy instruction provided in both of those camps. On the right side of the screen, I've provided for you an update as far as what are our numbers looking like for eligibility based on middle-of-the-year. We will continue the model that we've used for the past few years in providing eligibility letters and notification to families based on middle-of-the-year data, and we will not pull those back if a student becomes proficient. That is the optional component of Read to Achieve that we will offer. We are not required to provide that camp once a student demonstrates proficiency, but here in OCS, we've been committed to, once we tell a family that this is a summer option, that we leave that option on the table. So we will continue that model for this year as well. We anticipate those letters going out in just the next couple of weeks, so by the end of the month. We've already begun work with our teams across the district to get that out, and we will notify families via the physical letter, as well as leveraging many of our other resources like email, ClassDojo, family liaison, but most importantly, our teacher-parent connections because they are the closest relationship to our students and families. One exciting expansion with Read to Achieve camp will happen during the traditional Read to Achieve camp in July, so we have a partnership with the Arts Center. It's really an expansion of the Artist in Residency Program. It will run very similar to that. The students will have the opportunity to do a residency program each of the three weeks that they're in camp. This is all being funded through recruitment of sponsorships and donors in the community, so it will come at no cost really to us. We will also have the opportunity to bus our students over to one of our middle schools for a culminating experience the last week of camp. So we're excited about this arts offering. We hope that students will find this as a motivator to come to camp and stay at camp for the entire camp so that they have that fun activity every day to look forward to. It also provides our teachers with a planning block where they will have PLC work, and they will have support to ensure that our instructional time is being utilized to the best of its ability. All right, so high school credit recovery will be the other option that will be at the high schools this summer. Both Cedar Ridge and Orange High School will have camps running at their campuses. The camp in June Session One is typically how we refer to it, primarily focuses on our 11th and 12th graders that need to get those credits recovered. In Session Two, you can have any students 9th through 12th that really attend. Usually, that session has more 9th through 11th graders. The times and dates of those are also listed here. Notice that Session One is Monday through Friday, and Session Two is only Monday through Thursday. So that's kind of the big difference here, but it will look very similar to what we've experienced in the past. All right, middle school and high school transition camps. So for middle schoolers, we will have Middle School 101 for rising sixth graders, and that will occur at all three of our middle schools this year. The tentative date is August 13th, but please note that these dates could shift and change, and the place to get those updates, we will put them out, but also the summer programs and school websites will make any updates if that date changes, but right now, that is the tentative date that we're looking at for all Middle School 101. For freshman orientation, that is for rising ninth graders that are coming in. Cedar Ridge is looking to do theirs currently on August 21st, and Orange High School, August So there's a couple, oh, I'm sorry, I think I got a little carried away with my clicker. All right, so career and technical education, CTE classes or offerings will continue this summer. We'll have the Career Academy, student internships, and the engineering camp. So the Summer Careers Academy, just as a reminder, that is a partnership that we have with Chapel Hill Carrow Schools and the Home Builders Association. We've always had good representation in that program. I think many of you have had the opportunity to go to some of the culminating celebrations for that, so I hope that you get to do that again this year. Also, here is the student internships. Notice these will be unpaid this summer. Again, the funds have sunset, so that doesn't exist. However, students can still receive course credit if they do the proof of learning at the end of that internship, and many of our students do take advantage of that and get the course credit. So it's not for nothing, so to speak, as well as the experience that they gain, right? And we will also have the Project Lead the Way Engineering Camp that will happen in June at Orange High School's campus. All right, so the, my goodness, I'm really struggling. The multilingual high school bridge program, if you remember last summer, we offered this at Cedar Ridge High School. That was something that that school independently kind of wanted to pilot and try with the support of Emily Lewis, and this year, we really want to expand that, and both high schools will provide this. So you can think about this as a way to front-load some of the academic vocabulary. So if I was a student who, you know, maybe is going into biology in the next semester, I could get some front-loaded work around the academic vocabulary that's specific to that coursework to kind of give me a head start into this. So we would be working primarily with ninth and 10th grade students that are newcomers at both of the schools. So this is an exciting expansion. The dates are here for you, as well as the locations. It will happen at both schools. All right, so some of the staffing and planning priorities that I wanted to ensure that we were transparent about, because it will be a little bit different, we have developed some standard rates of pay to ensure that any teacher who is working in the summer, regardless of the program that they're working in, is being paid similarly to anyone else that's doing the same job, right? So whether we're talking about a teacher, a teacher assistant, an instructional assistant, bus drivers, anyone, we now have standard rates of pay that we're operating from, and that should help all of us in terms of recruiting and being able to match our best teachers for the best program based on their talents, right, and what they want to do. For some of the positions, it's a slight increase from what they had previously made. For some positions, it's a slight decrease. None of them are drastic changes. I think the biggest one is like $10 difference, plus or minus. Also, we have listed here some of the priorities that will be considered when we're looking at staffing. If we're offering less camps and we're serving less students, we will require less staff to be employed in the summer, and so we wanted to be certain that we were transparent about the criteria that will be prioritized as we begin to advertise, interview, and select staff that will work in each of these programs. Some of them require specific certifications, some of them do not, and all of those job descriptions will be very clear as to what's needed to work in each program. So some other logistics we wanted to make certain that you all, as well as the community, were aware of, is that transportation will be provided for all of our sites, but that will be based solely on the student's address in Infinite Campus. So we're going back to that domicile and making sure that we're being efficient and effective with our bus routing, and we can only serve and pick up students from the resident that we have in Infinite Campus. Breakfast and lunch will be provided free of charge, and Sarah Pitts and her office are doing a great job of working to ensure that we've got as much flexibility to meet all the needs of all the people that we can across our district. So we're so appreciative of the work of that department. We will also be able to offer paid after-school programming for the Read to Achieve students. That will be done through the YMCA. Just, it will run very similarly to how we've done after-school for this school year, and it will be at the same site as the Read to Achieve camp, which will be at River Park. For hiring of teachers, bus drivers, all of our positions, we will start first with internal applications through our Talent Ed system, and our HR department is even holding help sessions in person to ensure that that system or navigating the online application process is not a barrier for anyone wanting to be a part or to be considered for employment this summer. So they are going to host, I think, two, possibly three, different face-to-face sessions, as well as put out tutorials, videos, emails, and written directions. So that is very helpful. And then we are working to look at, what are our options with leveraging the Parent Portal to also assist with our outreach to parents? There are some barriers that we already have identified based on other experiences with Parent Portal, especially with elementary school, looking at how many families are actually hooked into Parent Portal at this point. So that may be one option that we try to explore as we're working to get more and more families connected with Parent Portal, but we will also continue to use every other means possible, like physical letters and teacher contact, and leveraging our family liaisons as well. In terms of the YMCA's Camp Crush, which will be an option for families, this will be a paid summer camp. It's a day camp. They'll have activities that are planned. I think they may even have some trips that are incorporated into that. Again, they will serve ages 5th through 12th. These are paid after-school programs, but I think any of the vouchers that are accepted for after-school during the school year are applicable to the summer camp programming as well, based on my conversations with them. So that is a positive for many of our families to have this as an option. The dates that they are going to run are located here. This camp will also be at River Park, which helps with so many of the logistics, and any closures that they choose to have based on holidays will be advertised and communicated directly through their website and their communication with families, and their website is listed there, and that's where families will sign up for that programming that will also be available this summer. All right, so that was an overview of some of the fun that is going to happen here this summer, but at this time, if you have any specific questions or feedback that you would like to give to me or our team, we're welcome to entertain those.
Ms. Padilla? Thank you for the presentation. Just curious, what's the percentage of students participating in the high school credit recovery program?
So I'm not sure of the percentage of students, and they are already working now to identify kind of who those students are going to be, but I'm not sure off the top of my head what those percentages are. I'm sure that we could do some research and find them and send them to you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Smiley?
Thank you for this presentation and all of the work on the multitude of different programs, and I'm glad that the preparation for high school for multilingual learners and the academic vocabulary and everything is expanding, and that's fabulous. And yeah, I mean, obviously, it's like disappointing that we don't have the federal money anymore to continue Read to Achieve-type programming for more grade levels of students. I guess I'm wondering, like, whether there's any talk about providing any additional sort of like resources or suggestions for parents in terms of like summer bridging-at-home activities they could do, or whether there's any ability to, I guess everybody turns in the computers, right? So like accessing some of those programs that are available during the school year, just anything to, even though the COVID money is gone, like the COVID recovery is not complete, and so that we obviously have a lot of kids in those other grade levels as well. Has there been any talk about doing anything else for those families who won't be receiving that this year?
So from the stance of early literacy, we put out a lot of resources in connection with the Home Literacy Initiative at the state. We have, you know, resources on our websites that families are pointed to. I think there's room definitely for us to expand some of those offerings, but again, we want to ensure that we're offering a multitude of ways to get at that practice, not just ones that are technology-dependent, for sure.
Yeah, and I think unmasked to, like, even just like, I think framing things for families as like getting ready for the next grade and like thinking about little activities that could be, just like informing people of that stuff, like, I think could be helpful, so.
Yeah, some schools have things that they send home at the end of each year, but there's not yet been something at the district level.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you for this presentation. Lots of good things happening. I like how you divided it up with what's required and that we're still doing lots of optional things and making the most of those monies, so I'm excited to see that. I am excited that the Arts Center partnership is going to serve there at our traditional Read to Achieve program. I'm just, I'm really glad that we are kind of launching that, and I'm curious about, in terms of the fact that we can't offer Read to Achieve to as many, you know, people as when we had the ESRA dollars, how are we feeling about, you know, we always have the ones that we reach out to, but then what was our participation rate last time? And what happens to those monies if, you know, only 60% of the ones that we reach out to then participate? And is it kind of rolling when we offer to other people, or what do we do with dollars that are maybe left over or saved, or are they not left over or saved if we aren't at capacity?
Yeah, so if you look at our three-year historical average of the students that we invite, about 60% of them will sign up and say that they are coming, and so that's what we staff and plan for. Of those students, only about 80% of them actually show up in the building for at least one day. Attendance is very challenging. It's a little bit slow at first, then it builds as we contact families and recruit to get them there, and then it drops off again as we go. So we are hopeful that the Arts Center partnership, like I mentioned, will be an incentive for students to continue to attend as we go, as well as some changes that we're going to make with some of the programming that's offered. As far as the money that's left over, I think Rhonda will echo me when I say that really doesn't ever exist because the money that we get from the state to provide the RTA camp is not sufficient to pay for all the things. So we still take on a burden, even with RTA camp outside of what's provided in PRC 016, as well as the PRC 085 funds that we also leverage for summer programming. Rhonda, any? Okay. She's making sure I was being clear. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, thank you for this. Actually, I want to call this now the Pre-Valentine Day Report, so congratulations for getting this to us so early, and I love hearing this leveraging of the parent-teacher connection to get more kids to show up. So that's... So that's fantastic. And of course, the multi-language high school program is awesome. So thank you for that. I want to build a little bit on Carrie's question with, you know, the real question to me is what is, you know, we know that we have to do RTA, but I've not seen like the benefit to our students. And, you know, how is it working in that context? What is the cost of cutting it back? Not the financial cost, but the cost to our students. Because if we understood that better, we might be able to make a better case for funding. And how much would it cost to expand it? So there's a lot of moving pieces. And I hear that you're really struggling to do what you can with limited resources. Just wondering if doing more would make a difference for our students. I have another question, and you know, I'm just going to, every year I'm going to just say this. And that's the readiness camp that we did, that you did about five years ago, which was in the big scheme of things relatively inexpensive and a way to get our early learners, our K1 and 2 kids, you know, ready for school. So I just wonder if that's ever going to come. But I just want to put out, I would love to hear that, too. Some of these things, you know, we could do, they're not committed recurring expenses. It's a one-time thing. And if it was making a difference for kids, it would be interesting to hear how we could do more. So, but thank you so much for this.
Mr. Anstrm?
Thank you so much. It's always exciting to hear about these programs where we're supporting our students and families and ensuring we're getting them to where they need to be. So on the eligibility that's going out in February, it's saying not you, maybe, it's you are.
You are.
Okay. And one of the, one of the wonderings I have is typically that just kind of says, here's where it's at from this duration, sign this, send it back. I'm wondering if we added the additional logistics information you provided may help parents understand that there's lunch, there is breakfast, there's transportation, and really understanding that it's, you know, we really want you here to help you and the benefit to the students, not just kind of like, here's the dates, you know, based on the score. Because I think that will help parents because that form normally doesn't have a lot of.
We made a huge revision last year and added a chunk around the research to support it in terms of like early literacy and how that data is utilized for long-term predictors. We also added a lot of the logistical information, like free lunch, free transportation, breakfast, and then also the after-school care option. We didn't have that last year. We had it the previous year. But we did an overhaul of that communication last year and learned a lot. And so we hope to continue to leverage that as well.
That's fantastic to hear. One other question I had is the camp that's going to go along at the same time. If my back-of-the-envelope calculation, that's 429 students at River Park, how many spaces are available for the camp itself?
For the, for RTA camp or for the after-school camp?
The Camp Crush.
So I don't know how many spaces they have available, but that will not coincide in terms of the Read to Achieve. The only part of Read to Achieve that would be impacting the Crush would be the after-school component. And they will have some additional staffing that come onboard in the afternoon to support that, just as they do after-school programming now. There are people that are there all day with Camp Crush, and then they'll have some additional folks. Likely, it will be offered to even some of our folks who may want to transition into after-school with our students.
Okay. I would like to ask if we could see if YMCA would, would put that they are going to support EC students as well? Do we know that, or can we check?
I can definitely check and find out.
That's been a typical challenge for families is finding where EC students can go and what accommodations, depending on the child and family needs. Because I think that would help out as well for our families to know that that's an option available. And that's all I had. Thank you so much.
You're most welcome. Mr. Richmond, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. This is very informative. And you're, you're coming out a little bit sooner every year.
We're trying.
You're working hard. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Davis with some bond updates. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Purcell, Vice Chair Richmond, board members, Madam Superintendent, administration, staff, and the community. We're here to bring you an update on the important bond conversation as we indicated in our January finance and capital planning meeting. We're going to take you through some stages on how we develop our projects for our goal to be ready to kick off next fiscal year. So today, we're going to, tonight, excuse me, we have our consultants with us that's really been tremendous, subject matter experts in helping us plan for the district and providing us project design scenarios. From there, we'll go through a couple of next steps and bond updates based on the information that you hear this evening. Just to reiterate, everyone, we did receive in the November election, 2024 bond referendum, a total of $125 million over the next 10 years. And based on the RUP report and working with the administration, we set out to achieve one new replacement elementary school, Orange Middle School improvements, and new addition comprehensive renovations to support 21st century learning. With that, I'll let Mrs. Steve Hess with Project Management North Carolina come to give you our project scenarios and our return for next steps. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Appreciate the ability to work with you all and serve Orange County Public Schools. My name's Steve Hess. I'm with Project Management Consultants. Yes, okay, thank you. I'm Steve Hess with Project Management Consultants. And I'm here to present three different options that we've been working on with KEI and Clark Nixon to evaluate how to execute the bond. So the first option is a new K5 onsite replacement. The second option would be a new K5 greenfield site. We would, a greenfield site is land. We would purchase land someplace in Orange County and build a new high, elementary school. And then the third option is a new K through 8. And that would most likely be an onsite replacement because the size of the land and the land requirements are a little bit greater for a K through 8. So the first option, option number one, construct a new K5 school on the current Hillsborough Elementary site. We're analyzing it. That has some challenges. Hillsborough Elementary School site has only 10 acres. Department of Public Instruction recommends a minimum of 15 acres for an elementary school. The challenge with that site is the topography. It's, it's, there's 15 feet, at least 15 feet grade elevation changes from one end of the site to the other. So in order to build a school that could be safely secured and accessible and have level playing fields would likely revolve, involve a lot of grading, which is expensive. The other issue is the need for swing space. There's a year-round program there that we would have to figure out a swing space for while we're constructing a new school because of the tightness of the site. The other, the other challenge with the school is the age and facility, age of the facility, and the fact that it was, it's almost 80 years old trying to meet modern-day standards with the facility. The second option is to construct a new K5 school on a greenfield site, buying land. From a design and construction point of view, minimizing risk, this is the best option because there's less, there's less risk to schedule and cost with a new design and a new build compared to a renovation. The challenge with that is timing and land scarcity. It would impact transportation patterns and likely require redistricting in the 28 to 29 school year. And then we could also begin discussions with county on the use of the current Hillsborough Elementary site. That site has a lot of important history on it. And we think that the county would be best served to figure out the best way to maximize the use of that site. Option three is a new K through 8 onsite replacement, either at Hillsborough Elementary School, Gravely Hill Middle School, or Orange County Middle School. The benefits of a K through 8 are that you, basically, you get more bang for your buck. Time value, money is important. So we could build a K through 8 school in one construction cycle as opposed to building a K5 and doing a middle school renovation, which would require two construction cycles, which adds another three years to the process. The challenge with construction escalation costs are typically average inflation is about 3% per year, and construction escalation has averaged 6% to 7% per year. The last five years has been an anomaly for a lot of reasons. But construction escalation costs are a real factor. So if we build a K through 8, we could actually get more school for our money. Also, the other benefit, there's several other benefits with the K through 8. There's a smoother student transition from elementary school to middle school. It also improves student retention. A lot of students leave the district at, at the middle school to go to other schools. So it would help with student retention. It consolidates the needs with one project. There's, you know, shared resources for one school that benefits and decreases operational costs. It's easier to maintain and operate one school as opposed to two schools. And then phasing of construction, which I talked about. So we did, just, this is a brief summary. We're going to get into a more detailed summary the next time we present to you. But the comparisons between Hillsborough Elementary site, the Gravely Hill Middle School site, and Orange Middle School site. Hillsborough Elementary is challenging because it's only 10 acres in the topography. Gravely Hill has the largest acreage. I think it's around 45 acres. And then Orange Middle School is a larger site. And we could definitely find a building footprint somewhere between the Orange Middle School and Orange High School site. So there's, the other challenge with Orange Middle School is topography. It's not as bad as Hillsborough Elementary, but it, there is some grade changes. And we'd have to, well, in all three situations, we most likely would build the school and relocate the athletic fields because the athletic fields provide a building pad, a ready, flat site for a building pad. With Hillsborough Elementary School, the, we would have to look at relocating the year-round program during construction and finding a swing space. That comes at an additional cost. There's no real benefit over, as, it's no, it's no benefit, doesn't provide a benefit long-term. Basically, we're spending money to house students, and you don't end up having a new school for it. So it doesn't improve our capital improvement cost. Hillsborough Elementary School is also marked for consolidation, so that's a consideration. It does have a high expense over the next 10 years as far as facility improvements. Actually, all three schools have high expenses over the next three years for facility improvements. Orange Middle School is the most expensive. The Gravely Hill Middle School site, the benefits of that are, it's a large site. It's also marked for a comprehensive renovation in the Woolport Study. And it's also in an area where the population is growing. So we could build the school, and it would serve students where the population is growing. Orange Middle School site, the challenges with that are some of the topography, the fact that it's on an existing operating middle school and high school campus. And one of our board members also mentioned the increased traffic volume, which is not to be taken lightly. It has a lot of traffic right now with the middle school and high school. So adding 500 students would really strain that road. So that's another factor that we will be looking at. All right. So just to summarize, option one is we're looking at Hillsborough Elementary School, what the impacts and challenges are to replace that, replace a K5 on Hillsborough Elementary site. And we're also looking at rebuilding on the Gravely Road, Gravely Hill Middle School site. Option two is the new greenfield site. We are meeting with a broker tomorrow to just get a broad brush of available lots. The challenge with that is the timing. Land is scarce in Orange County, especially, you know, 15 to 20 acres. We would have to, typically, if we're competing with private developers, private developers would quickly put an option to purchase on the land. And then they would have three to nine months to do, to perform due diligence before they lock in on that purchase price. We may or may not have that luxury, and it would be a public process because we'd have to bring that decision to you all. So there's some challenges that are kind of above and beyond just design and construction with a new greenfield site. And then option three is the new K through 8. And we're looking at the different sites, Hillsborough El, well, really, it's going to be, it would be between Orange Middle School and Gravely Hill Middle School. And we're also doing an analysis of the benefits of K5 through K8, so. I'm a little bit nervous, so I speak too quickly, but do you all have any questions?
Mr. Anstrm?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the clarity, I just want to say out loud is we're always talking about Hillsborough Elementary's buildings, not the program. So I just want to say it out loud because I know a lot of people get confused about the year-round program versus the building they're in. And this is really talking about the building itself. At the beginning, you were talking about the 15 acres for the new elementary school being kind of ideal. What is the acreage for a K8? Is it the same, or is it more?
It's more. It's about 20 because they have a, a K8 would have a separate auditorium instead of just a combined gym auditorium like a K5 does. But I believe it's 20 acres.
Okay. And how much does Orange Middle School in acres have? When I looked at the GIS, it was like 11 something without the, the actual maintenance lot behind it. So you can't really tell how big it is.
So I, I did not look at GIS, and I just did a quick Google Earth. And I overlaid Orange Middle School and Orange High School. And that's where I came up with 35 acres.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's both, both campuses?
The idea would be that we would use both campuses to find available space to put the K through 8. Most likely, what would happen is we would build the K through 8 on the athletic fields and then move the athletic fields to the current Orange Middle School site, where the Orange Middle School building is now. That's the level of detail that we haven't got into, and we will bring that information back to you.
Okay, I'll let others ask questions.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I really appreciate the overall presentation and the, kind of like some logical nature of decisions kind of comes out with the way you laid out the pros and cons of, and, you know, assets and liabilities of different options. And so I really, I really appreciate that. And I know we already have some community conversation, planning happening. So I just appreciate the way you, you all have worked together to, to move us forward in this way.
That's Mr. Davis's guidance.
That's awesome.
Anything else?
Ms. Molly?
Yes, thank you again for all of this. Just a couple of things, just a thing to throw out. As you mentioned, thinking about the K5 through K8. And another possible option, it seems to me, would be putting a K5 on part of the Gravely Hill. a K-5 on part of the Gravely Hill land. So I think that seems like another possibility to consider. I also, I have some concern. I, I see the point about if you do a K-8, you sort of get more bang for your buck in certain ways, more students, and you're covering like middle school and all as well. I do have some concern about that, that I'm sure we can explore further during the process in terms of, like, I would imagine a K-8 school would probably take up the entire bond budget. I mean, maybe I'm wrong about that. We got an earlier estimate for how much a K-8 versus a K-5 school would cost about a year ago, and it was significantly more expensive than a K-5 school. And so, you know, in the bond, the hope was to do like three different things, right? Like a new middle school, new elementary school, and, or replacement middle, new elementary, and, and additional projects. And so I do have some concern about like putting so much of the money into one bucket and having not very much left for, for other things. That's not really feedback for you. It's just sort of a general, just laying out a thing I'm thinking about.
So those are great points, and points that we heard earlier, and points that we are taking into consideration, specifically the K-5 on Gravely Hill Middle School. We will do a cost feasibility study on how the best used Gravely Hill Middle School Site, if that's what we choose. And the other intuitively, in my mind, it's, it's cheaper to build a K-8 now than build a K-5 and do a middle school renovation three years later, but we can dig into, we will dig into that also.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, sorry. I just, I wanted to say, I think we're making really great progress on this. I thank you for that. The issues are complicated, and, you know, I sit here and think, just always reminding myself that the decisions that we make now are going to impact this district for many, many years to come. Also, we made some promises to voters that I want to make sure we're upholding, and one of them is that we asked them to approve what, to this district is an unprecedented bond commitment with a substantial tax increase to start a process of beginning to replace our oldest schools. That was the goal we set out to do. So I just want to put that on the table. I don't expect answers to these questions, just some things I realize you're planning just to think about. On the building capacity point, when Wolfert talked to us, they said newer, fewer schools, and they talked about moving to 600-seat elementary schools. And when you go to the 800-seat combined schools, you know, technically, you're reducing our capacity because we have 500-seat elementary schools plus 800-seat middle schools, and now we're putting an 800-seat total. So I just would like you to really rationalize the capacity implications of, of the options as you look at them. The other que, the other thing that Wolfert said, had asked was, are our schools in the right places? And just as, so you know, for years, we've been saying, oh, there's all this growth in Meben, we need to put another school out there, but when you look, dig down, down a little bit into the data, it doesn't look like the Meben growth is converting into Orange County school students. They're going elsewhere. And we have, of course, a new charter school going in, in Meben, so there's lots of factors. And, and I just wonder if, as a board, we should be looking, taking a hard look at enrollment. I know it's not part of your process now, but, but to really understand, we have lots of growth in Hillsborough, not just Meben. We have old schools in town, you know? So there's just some questions that it's raising for me about where's the growth? How is growth being diverted to charters and private schools and homeschooling? And, and where, where should we put our schools? And by the way, Mrs. Rath and Dr. Pack have done some really good work in this area, and I don't know if you saw it, but Chapel Hill Schools hired Carolina Demography to look at enrollment, and they even had data on public schools, I'm sorry, private schools and, and homeschooling, and how many students Chapel Hill was losing to that. So there's just some factors here. Again, Meben looks like it's where we have the growth, but I think when you dig down into the data, not sure we have facts that support that. I just also want to say, I am, I, I don't know what you mean by combining Gravely and the middle and elementary schools. I love Sarah's suggestion about building a second school. I would not be supportive of tearing down Gravely Hill Middle School. I just think the voters would not be happy. That's, that's not what they said. That's not what I heard them say. And I wondered if you might also just do a check-in with Meben Planning because, to see, because, you know, that area is in a growing industrial site, and there's more industrial development planned for that corridor, so I wonder if you'd look at that. And then finally, just some longer, just if I want to just go, let, go a little crazy on this. The county has asked us as, by their policy, to start working with towns on planning, community spaces, recreational spaces, and others. So as you think about the space needs, there's a question about, you know, is there, does Hillsborough, the county interested in putting some recreational spaces that they might share the cost in? And I have to say, and this is a Mr. Davis in spot, Mr. Davis has got this superpower of being able to vision in a big way. So I just wonder if it would be worth it, and you could say no on this, I don't care, but it would be interesting to take a look at that whole Orange High School, Orange Middle School campus as a whole thing, because after this 10 years, the next thing up is Orange High School. And if we had a vision of what that overall campus might be in the future, might we build something different as Phase 1 to that vision rather than trying to find a site, use it as a site for an elementary school? So I just wonder if we might have a bigger vision for that campus because it's so important. It's so, it's pivotal to our district. So those are my questions. I just, again, and great work, great work.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, and thank you, Board, for those comments.
I have one comment, Mr. Davis.
I apologize, Mr. Richmond. I forgot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Richmond, and then, and then I have one.
Okay.
That's okay. That's okay. And, and excuse me if I didn't bring this up earlier in the week when we looked over this, but it came to my attention when we, when it was mentioned about the traffic concerns at Orange Middle School, and then Bonnie raised it too. And it's just a law enforcement officer in me, having worked here in the county for 26 years, but I do know that we've had numerous complaints about the traffic concerns at Gravely Hill, especially with our tractor-trailers. Medline came in, and, and we've had a lot of families who were picking up their kids from Gravely complaining about how fast the tractor-trailers were coming through. There's a tractor-trailer company coming pretty soon to the old Flea Market area, so I'm sure that's going to draw more tractor-trailers into that area. And then also, Gravely Hill, but right directly behind Gravely Hill, closer to I-85, or I-40, is the waste station. So for a number of years, you've had tractor-trailers who want to bypass that waste station, and they'll come in, they'll come in off of West 10 Road, or Mountain Willen Road, or Buckhorn Road, and travel West 10 Road just to bypass that. So I think that's a factor we probably need to keep in mind when it comes to Gravely Hill during a K-5 or a K-8.
Thank you. Duly noted. Ms. Purcell?
I just wanted to make a statement. When we first started this, it was the county commissioners said that they wanted us to rebuild three schools, and then we got $125 million, and I think even the county commissioners have backed off and said, there's no way we can build three new schools with $125 million. And I think you, as the building school expert, would agree with that. So I just want to make that clarification that when we did start, when this first started out and we were talking about the bond, it was possibly replacing some of the oldest schools and rebuilding, but with only $125 million, we're, and having some left to, to fix some of the things that we need to fix in some of the schools. We don't have the money to build three new schools, so I'm just making that point.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I just had one, one other comment was, one of the other things, one, I'm very excited to hear the feedback from the community and what their thoughts are on this versus us pushing our thoughts before we hear them back. But one thing I think that is very important to keep in mind on this, especially with the greenfield, that's millions of dollars that could be spent on land. I've seen some up to $7 million for spaces that wouldn't even accommodate the acreage that we're talking about here. So I think that's one of the things we should be sharing with, you know, our community as we talk about the greenfield versus that $7 million could be used in a different way to support, you know, the facilities, or more capacity, or traffic redirection, whatever it comes out to be based on the feedback. But I, I just wanted to make sure, you know, people know that we have looked at land in the past, and it, it's millions. So we, we want to you to be good stewards of this money and try to figure out how we maximize the value for our community, and I'm definitely looking forward to seeing and getting the feedback from our community on these. Thank you all so much for these, these options.
Yes, thank you. And to that segue, we are in the sausage-making process, and so we're bringing you facts and figures from our administrative and subject matter experts, but the real voices are our community because they will lay the vision of what schools are in this 21st century. And those comments will be happening the week of February 24th, as well as the week of March 3rd. In tandem, we will also be launching a community survey to capture some of those thoughts for those who may not be able to make the in-person meetings. And as we go through our community engagement, they have been mentioned, we will have opportunities for more via online or Zoom if time permitting. We want to come back before you in February with some more information based on the comments that we've heard today, and so we will refine some of those options, continue to chisel away as we want to continue to make sure that we understand our three pillars, time, scope, and money, neither of which we have much. And so we want to continue our vision as we are set forth, fiscal year 2026, to the county that we'll be ready, if funding is available, to start the design of the project that comes and rises to the top. And so following that February meeting, we have our March 10th board meeting, again, hoping to bring you more information concerning our bond process, as well as we will have a Hillsborough Elementary School public hearing. And the Hillsborough Elementary School is our oldest portfolio, and so even if the table of not using the Orange High, Orange Middle School Site does not surface, there are some standards and policies that we have to do according to NCDPI. And so we'll be bringing that information, as well as allowing the voices of the community to be heard on what we should do with that piece of property in our portfolio, and then again, providing you more opportunities for the public to weigh in on the bond process at that time. And with that, we end.
I just want to thank you both very much tonight for being here and going through this process and getting it started for us. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, we have come to the end of our meeting. Do we have anything else that we need to discuss? Not hearing anything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Richmond?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a great evening and be careful getting home.